Time being 6:30 on April 8, 2024. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Town of Hanson Planning Board here in the Town of Hanson Select Board's Meeting Room. I would like to also announce for those in attendance that this meeting is being recorded for distribution on Whitman Hanson Community Access. Playback times and other related information on this recording can be found at WHCATV. With that call to order, we have all members except for Vice Chair Cohen present at tonight's meeting, as well as the full Town Planner Office. First item of business on our agenda this evening is a 6:30 approval, March 25, 2024, public meeting minutes. Find those under Item 1 of your packet. For the record, I would like to note that it was confirmed, not only by members of the Board but also members of the audience, that during the March 25, 2024 meeting, there was an attendee, to be known as Al Diaz, that was reporting the meeting illegally. I would like to make sure that it is of this record tonight, that any reference of any video or audio recording of that meeting on March 25 was done without notification to either the Vice Chair, who started the meeting at the time, myself as Chair when I took over, or to our administrative assistant from the Town Planner's Office, whether to announce the recordings and/or sign into the agenda for that evening. With that, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Motion made by Mr. Benado, seconded by Mr. Els. Any discussions in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays and no ebbs, that's 4-0-1. We have no public hearings this evening, so we can move right along to a 6:35 in just a few moments, which is an approval not required. 461 Palm Ponset Street, assessment map 23 lot 2, application by JCO Connection LLC, plan prepared by Land Planning Incorporated. Take a few minutes, gentlemen, to get acquainted with the A&amp;R submitted. You shall find copy of the plan, as well as some PDFs inside your packet. Item number 2. The time has arrived at 6:35. We're going to go into our first appointment, as described a few moments ago, for an A&amp;R for 461 Palm Ponset Street, assessment map 23 lot 2, Town Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this Form A was submitted, um, April 4th. So, what we have here is an existing dwelling at 461 Palm Ponset, with an existing leaching system and an accessory dwelling, accessory building, garage. The applicant appears to wish to subdivide this into two parcels, or two lots, conforming to zoning. And I will let Mr. Rice from Land Planning fill you in on the rest.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, Gary Rice of Land Planning. The existing lot was Lot 2 on map 23, and was subdivided into two lots, A and B. Lot A has the existing house on it, the septic system. The existing house was built in 1923, so it didn't meet zoning. As you can see, the zoning setback line goes through the house. And the garage, which is going to be razed, it's in very bad shape, is off to its, if you're facing the street, off to the right side there. We have our lot line going through there, as we made the lot be, having 150 feet, actually 150.12 feet back at the 100-foot line. And I just, I'm actually just offset the line, the current right line, to create that line. And then we also had the frontage of 150 feet out of South Street, at our lot. And with Lot A, we actually have 154.5 feet back, 100 feet, in case they tear the house down, and after, they could at least still meet as a buildable lot for Lot A, as they have the width.
Have you been by the property?
I see that they started tearing the house down.
The house is down.
Oh, it is down now.
The only thing that's left is a foundation.
Okay, from what I understand, my client was to speak with the building inspector about that, and what he relayed to me is that he tore it down, that his lines kept the foundation, and he could rebuild it in the same spot. So, that's something he has to deal with.
Yeah, with the building inspector, yeah. It's down now.
Right.
I think it pancake on itself during the storm.
Well, it's got, as long as the foundation's still there, that's the key.
I peek yours up on the condition of the board. I don't think I expect this job.
It's supposed to have a demolition permit.
I think it was a kind of an act of Mother Nature that helped.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, Town Planner.
As far as I know, your applicant has not talked to the building inspector about rebuilding on that foundation, and that was as of last week.
Okay.
I believe they did have a demolition permit.
Oh, good.
I believe, because I think at first, it was an issue, but they've addressed it with the building department. But I just know, as of last week, I spoke with the building inspector, and they have not approached him regarding putting a dwelling on that same foundation.
Right.
So, that was one of the reasons why, on the plan, I said I don't see the setback line at the 100 feet, because if that house goes away, they're going to lose zoning protection.
Right.
So, I did go through the checklist, Mr. Chair, the 20 items that are listed there, and the applicant does, did complete all 20 items that are listed.
Any questions for the board?
Yeah, I don't see any kind of a stamp for the wetlands on here, and we've been through this before. And, you know, I know, because this is the planning board, we're not supposed to be talking about the wetlands, but we're certifying the amount of upland at this meeting, am I correct?
We're certifying the amount of upland?
Yeah.
We're agreeing?
We're agreeing that it's X amount of, as what's presented. So, my point is, without engineering stamp, how could we possibly say, this is how many square feet of upland that we have? And I've brought this up before in the past, and I'm going to keep bringing it up, because this, this is just, like, might as well be crayon. You know, because if there's no one that's, there's no certification that these wetland lines are accurate, so that makes the upland not accurate. So, that's all I have to say.
To that point, I understand what Mr. Kim is saying. The planning board does require a statement on the, on the A&amp;Rs. There is under General Note 7, where it discusses who flagged the wetland. In General Note 8, which is one of the official statements that the planning board requires, which says that no verification of any wetlands has been made or intended by the planning board endorsement.
Right, but that's, that's for our protection, because, you know, if we're going to certify, like, we're saying, you know, you have your A&amp;R, right? And by all right, we don't really care what the wetland is, it's not our concern. Our concern is we're certifying on this thing, that this X amount of upland, but that can't be accurate, because we don't know what the real numbers are on the lot. That where exactly is the riparian line, where's the 100, 200 foot? And it's based on what's drawn here. So, we don't know that, because we don't have empirical data to support it.
I think that is a valid point, and I think that is something that the planning board, as a board, may wish to consider in a revision to their own subdivision control law, to state that, because I don't disagree. I mean, this isn't an approved wetland line, this isn't approved riparian zone, so could that line affect the upland? Yes, it could. Unfortunately, we don't have the mechanism, other than what we have right now, but I think that is a cue, I think that is a valid point. And a valid concern. I mean, you know, so, I can, I can, I can understand Mr. Kim's point.
But, you know, so, I know, you know, we don't have, you're saying that we don't have a mechanism, but I don't really agree, because by accepting this A&amp;R, we're accepting the square footage of upland, right? And we don't have the empirical data to support the upland, because the rest of it is wrong. So, the mechanism is there. So, we have the, we have the ability to say, come back when you have the proof that this, that this is accurate. Mr. Trump, I hope you...
Yeah, I get it. I understand what you're saying.
Even if, even if, so, April 4th of the submission date, we have...
I have the April 22nd, which is the next meeting, would be the 20-day appeal period, 21-day, 21-day time limit.
Yeah, so, even with our next meeting, we would adjust, postpone it, make a decision until that, to get that data, you know, the applicant could turn around and say that the planning board's acting out of its jurisdiction.
How, well, that's my point, is how can we be acting out of our jurisdiction? Our jurisdiction is to certify the lot and the amount of uplands that are there, right? And we don't have the empirical data to support that. So, there is no argument there, in my mind.
We could have counsel differently, and counsel would have to weigh in on it.
I do have an email from the botanist who flagged it, at ECR, stating that the site is not located within the map priority or estimated habitat, according to mass. The site does not contain land subject to flooding, FEMA zone. The site is located near USGS map stream. The site is not located near a map urban pool. The site is not located within an area of critical environmental concern. And he flagged, he's a botanist, working for ECR, and he flagged the wetlands and that mean high water, which establishes the riparian zone.
So, all right, so, you got an email, but it's not on the plan, there's no stamp, we don't know who this is. So, when this thing, when we accept this, right, what are we accepting? We're accepting what's written on here, right? And what I'm saying is, what's written on here is not correct. So, in order to correct it, right, his name has to be on this plan, right? And that's in within our rules and regulations.
That would be, that would not be, that would have to be something, you'd have to have in your rules and regulations, saying the botanist or an engineer would have to stamp it.
Which is something that we've had in debate over the past years, to get, to get a way in from counsel on, and get an opinion on that. Unfortunately, we were going down that road, and then the last planner left, so we haven't picked the ball back up yet again.
But still, you know, I know, I'm just going to keep repeating myself, but we're certifying the amount of upland area. I don't care whether it's who flagged it, when they flagged it, or how they flagged it, but in order for us to agree to the upland, right, we have to have proof and empirical data to support that, and we don't have that. So, this application is actually lacking, and that's the point that I'm trying to make in that respect. Is that, you know, the botanist certified under, you know, by the state to approve these wetland lines, you know, we don't know any of that, because we don't have his name on here, don't have a stamp, or proof that he's qualified.
Well, I have his name on, I don't, I just have the company that he works for on this, so I guess I don't have his actual name.
Or a stamp.
Suggestion.
Mr. Els?
In lieu of not being stamped by the Conservation Commission, or, which I'm sure it has to go to, do we put a heading on here that says that this plan does not, was not approved by the Conservation Commission, with a designated name of the wetland's location?
Yeah, but that still doesn't solve the real issue, right? It's because if we, if they go back, and they decide, well, you know, the line's not where it is, and that's a subjective thing, right, where that line is. It depends on who's looking at it, and whether they want more land, or less land, or whatever. So, my point is, though, if that changes, right, the square footage of upland changes, and how will we know? We won't know that. It'll be that photo of our ECR, because you can prove this plan with that amount of upland. And I just, I see that as a problem.
Subject true?
Well, the, I mean, the one thing, though, is, you do have those two statements, you know what I mean? One is that you're not, when you're signing that plan, you're not making any judgments or determinations of the wetland, but also that you have that statement that says, you know, you're not certifying that it's in compliance with zoning. So, for instance, if, for some, if that, if when they go to conservation, let's say that line did move significantly to render that lot non-conforming by zoning, then the zoning enforcement officer would say, hey, that you don't meet the zoning requirements, and therefore, this law is no good. So, I, you do have some mechanisms, but you...
Well, this board has no mechanism, because the building inspector is going to be the one that determines what the actual upland is. But what I'm saying is, we're going to put a signature on this, based on those square footage, and that's not right, because we don't have the empirical data to support it. I just keep repeating myself, because it's just, you know, that's a fact, you know, it's not even arguable, in my mind, because it says right in our regulations, that when we, when we sign this thing, we're signing the square footage. And I'm not talking about the wetlands, you can forget about that, but you can't certify to me, you can't prove to me that those numbers are accurate.
Without an approved wetland line?
Right.
Don't disagree, don't disagree with that.
Yeah, I'm not even saying approved.
But, but an approved, that's, when an approved wetland line, but an approved wetland line by the Conservation Commission is one that's valid for three years.
Right.
So, I mean, that's what would count.
Yeah.
So...
But, you know, the signature and the name of the person who's, you know, certifying it would make me feel a little more comfortable, because at least that person would be responsible if this isn't accurate. And what do they do? They come back to us and redo the square footage? No, they're not. They're going to just do whatever they want to do in the background, where in reality, we're supposed to be here to make sure that the regulations are followed. And we can't, because we don't have empirical data to support it. So, I'm just throwing that out there, you know?
I have a question.
Just been a...
Okay, so, after this, it goes to, the next step would be to build, and if they're going to build, then they have to go through conservation and the permitting process, which would have that requirement.
So, what you're really saying, though, right, if you think about it, right, is a workaround, right? Instead of going through the regulations, you're trying to go around them, by saying, all right, well, let's just certify. At some point, somewhere, somewhere down the road, right, let me finish. So, what you're saying is, somewhere down the road, someone else is going to either change this, or do something to it, based on what they find, right? But if you, if you look at our regulations, right, we're required to certify this for the square footage that's there. We can't do that, right? So, do we work around the rule, or do we use the rule the way it's supposed to be, and with the way it was written? And that's why I'm looking at this, thinking, something isn't right here. I mean, the rest of this, I really don't, you know, it doesn't concern me at all, but I think that's an important point, that I think we need to understand. That's all I'm going to say.
Oh, no, I understand, but do we have that requirement? We don't have the requirement, then...
We do. What I'm saying is, we do have the requirement. We're asking the proponent to come in, right, and tell us what the upland is, the square footage of upland is, right? So, the information we've given us is not accurate, because it's, we don't have the empirical data to support it. So, if you look at it that way, right, this, you shouldn't be signing this thing, because you have, no, you'd be signing it not knowing what the actual square footage is.
I think where you need to make clarification in the subdivision control law is that, under the A&amp;R, or any plan, that when they come before the planning board, that it's with an approved wetland line, so it has a file number on the plan. Because that way, you know for sure that that line's been approved, and then the numbers...
If they don't have that, how do we...
Well, under the A&amp;R regulations is, there's specific requirements, and it's, does it front on one of three types of ways? Yes. Does it have the frontage? Yes. Does it have the access? Yes. Wetlands have always been that gray area, where some cases, there's, there's flip-flops between the courts.
See, I'm not even talking about the wetlands, right? You can take that right off the table. What I'm talking about is...
But the wetlands do have that...
The square footage of upland.
But the wetlands do impact the upland, because if the wetlands move, then the upland would, could shrink or increase.
Yeah, that's right. That's what I'm really getting at, is, so, you don't, you can't accurately tell me what the square footage of the upland is.
If they had a lot that was 30,000 square feet, and they had up on that 27,000 square feet, and it's a non-approved wetland line, and they come to you, and then they go to the, then they go to the commission, and they find out that, oh, we only, we only actually have 26 and a half.
Yeah.
So, now it's a non, now technically, it's not a buildable lot under the zoning. Unfortunately, it's, that's where the building inspector's supposed to make that, to say, hey, you don't have enough upland, therefore, this is not a buildable lot, and you can't, you can't build on it. So, I understand your point, I do, I really do, and I think that's something that needs to be addressed. Unfortunately, until we do so, you know, it's up to the board, what you choose to do.
Right, but what I'm saying is, you're kind of dancing through the wheat, because, you know, like I said, for our perspective, sitting here at this, at this table, the wetlands don't mean anything, right? Only that, whatever that line is, is the square footage, and I still, I haven't heard anyone say, this is what the square footage is, and I can certify that, I can, you know, I have the empirical data to support it.
There's two numbers, there's the total lot size, and then there's the 90% buildable. So, it's actually two numbers, and in this case, four.
And I can tell you from experience, right, that if you've got three wetland scientists in the room at the same time, and ask them to figure out the wetlands in here, you'd get three different versions of it, right? So, I don't really care about that, but my point is, let's find somebody and, you know, put a sign on his forehead, I guarantee that this is the square footage. So, and then it's his responsibility, and not ours.
Well, the person, the person that's making that, we'll say guarantee, at this point, is the land surveyor. He's, that's, so, he's making that statement, that that's what he has for upland, and that's what he has for wetland. So, he would be responsible at this point for that, for those numbers being on the plan. Now, beyond that, an approved wetland line is one that's set and approved, so that way you know for hard, hard...
Harder numbers, or more...
I think that's the way it should be.
Right.
Because, you know, the two go together, you know, like, we're talking about, you know, allowing these two lots to happen, and to be honest with you, this is all on a riparian zone, right? There's a, there's a stream on the other side of that. Aren't we supposed to make sure that we're protecting that stuff? At least by looking at these A&amp;Rs and making sure that, you know, the square footage of upland is accurate? Because if it isn't, then now we're encroaching on a stream and all that other stuff, so, just throwing that out there.
I know, you can throw it out there, and I hear what you're saying, and I totally understand it, but I, I think you're, I think you're limited.
So, under the existing conditions and under existing jurisdictions, are there any other comments in regards to this A&amp;R?
No.
What's the little word?
See, if state law says, that he does...
Say it.
Yeah, if state law says he meets all the requirements of a Form A.
Right. No, he doesn't, because of the square footage. He can't, he can't, he doesn't have the empirical data to support the square footage that he's, that he stated on here. I can keep saying, I can say it all night long.
We get it, we get that. But until we take, until we take that and actually change it inside of our own...
Well, everyone keeps saying we have to change something, right? It says right in the regulations, certification of the square footage of the, of the size of the, of the upland, right? It says it right in there.
Where?
Right? You're going to certify the amount of square footage of upland in here, somewhere, right? How can you do that? But, whatever, I don't want to argue about it.
Yeah, I guess you have to think the surveyor and the botanist board can work, they're doing a professional job of flagging the wetlands and locating the wetlands properly.
Right. But it's supposed to be on here, though, that's my point. And I believe it says in our regulations that, you know, his name's supposed to be on here, because we're, you're making an assertion that these wetlands are accurate, right? But you don't have anybody to support it.
Well, I have his company name on it, it's the best I can do. It's got ECM on there.
The stamp's supposed to be on... What Mr. Kim is saying is, is actual certification stamp.
Right.
Do you have a, you have a letter from him stating that?
I have his email to us, saying what he found out there, you know, the wetlands, the river, and the, that the fact there was no flood zone, the other things that I read off.
Did he prepare a report?
I believe he's going to have to, if we're going to have any forward anyway, so...
So, can you send me that report?
I can try and see if my client paid for a report, so I can, I'll check that out.
But there's no mechanism for us, at this point, to require that to be placed up there.
Well, you have requirements.
Yeah, well, look at the requirements, that it says in the notes, right, on the, on there.
Yeah, certified plans.
Yeah, so, am I wrong in saying that, like, we're certifying this plan as it's, right, with the, with the upland square footage that's on there, right? We don't have that, we don't know that. That, that is actually, I'm not going to call it a lie, but it's a misstatement, because you don't have the empirical data to support that number. So, how can you approve an A&amp;R that does not have the right information? Because it doesn't have the right information, because you don't have a stamp to prove that that's what it is. So, I don't, you know, do whatever you want to do, but I'm just telling you, I think it's wrong.
Well, you have your out up in the court under there, right under the registry block, planning board endorsement does not certify compliance of zoning bylaw. So, right there, you've given yourself the out.
I'm not looking for an out.
No, I'm just saying, that's what you have.
I'm looking, I'm looking to follow, I'm sitting here, and I'm on the south side of the table, and my job is to make sure that the regulations are followed. And I'm trying to be a, you know, I'm just trying to make a point, that, you know, if we're going to do this, we might as well do it right, right? Because that's better for the client and us, as a town, to make sure that these plans are correct. And it's not, so, you know...
Don't keep saying it's not. We can scratch the it's not, you're not sure if it is. You keep saying that area is not...
The better way to say it is that it's not certified. It's a better way to say it. So, you know, apples and oranges, you know, whatever, semantics.
It's correct as it stands right now.
It's not certified, yeah. It's correct as it stands right now, without being stamped certified with somebody's registration number and all that, that they're certified. That's what Mr. Kim's point is. So, the numbers that we have for the uplands, the 90%, things like that, we, truthfully, that might change, once a certified looks out there and says, oh, yeah, I'm, I'm going to stamp my name on that, but, well, let me make some measurements first. It could change, or something might change with the wetlands, you know? So, it's, it's an internal thing that we, we need to discuss and certainly change.
Sure.
And we just haven't been able to grasp, because there's been 1,000, million other things to do.
So, in the meantime, we have to prove, or we have, we have to agree on this or not, as it is?
So, let me ask you a question, is there anything to agree with, right? You're looking at this thing, and you're looking for a way to just sign off on this thing, right? And what I'm trying to tell you is, if you sign off on this, right, you have not followed the law, right? Because, you know, those rules and regulations are bylaws, right? And if you're not going to follow the bylaw, then you shouldn't even be here.
Do we have that mechanism?
We don't need a mechanism, we have it, it's there, it's right there, right in front of you.
John, does it meet the state's requirements for a Form A lot?
Yes.
What's that?
Does it meet the state's requirements for an A&amp;R?
The minimum requirements to meet the Form A lot, that's correct.
More than that.
Right.
Because if it's a 30,000 square foot lot, correct?
And that's what we need, that's what John's referring to.
Right.
We need to change that. Yes, it might meet the minimums and requirements, but there are some other mitigating factors that could change the number that we're...
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, you can't even say that, right? Because you don't have empirical data to support the information that's on that plan, right? So, you can't say, well, you know, it's, meets the state requirements. That doesn't matter either, right? It really doesn't, because what matters is here, the bylaw tells us, right, in order for us to approve an A&amp;R, right, all the correct information has to be on the plan, and it's not, right? So, if you want to approve a plan that does not have all of the, the correct information, then you should say that out loud when you approve it, all right? Otherwise, why are we here?
So, we do have a choice, we do, we can get counsel's input on Mr. Kim's grievance, which is understandable, we can get counsel's...
Oh, it's not a grievance, it's just a point.
It's like, so, disagreements, we're... We can get counsel's opinion between now and the next planning board meeting, and postpone this to that meeting to get a proper answer. and postpone this to that meeting to get a proper answer. That's also a choose because we're within the, was it fourth, right?
We should know. We should know the answer.
It was it was submitted on the first.
So the next meeting is the twenty second?
Yeah. So that's your last day to do anything.
So we'll be within the timeframe to get an answer.
So let's do that just to be safe.
Start the motion. Is that a motion?
Yeah.
So motion on the floor to postpone until April, ten to April twenty second. Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Ellison. In special regards to that, we'll. Standing now, prepared to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So we'll postpone this to the twenty second and town and and the planner will get clarification from counsel in regards to what's been brought up. You might show yourself.
Sorry, guys, but I just wanted to make a point.
No, it did something before. It's done in some facts.
Just I mean, just be aware.
Well, we all fully understand. We just want to make sure that we're doing it by our right.
In the meantime, guys, might swing by there and check out that check out the foundation. So I just. I really think that that storm knocked down the second floor. Which must have been a crazy crash.
I don't know if I'd wanna, I mean, airport right behind me. I'm saying the airport right behind. Sorry to put a, you know, a glitch in your thing there.
We'll see you on the twenty second.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, we have a master plan, Old Colony Plan Council Meeting and update with the Master Planning Steering Committee.
Um.
Postpone it to the twenty second.
I'll give you a quick update that from an email that I received from Rhiannon. Um. So this was received on April the fourth, Thursday, April the fourth, and the first three chapters, uh she she was able to speak today with about steering committee's feedback uh on the initial three chapters. Said seeing that most were edits and suggestions of the for the overall plan, the planning board now is welcome to read the for chapters one through three. So I can send that to.
Great.
Other members who are not on the steering committee. Um. They have the next three chapters, she's supposed to send she was gonna send them to me. She hasn't done that yet. We should go to the steering committee. And then they want to meet with the steering committee and hoping to set that up for the seventeenth of April, suggesting steering committee and the Old Colony Planning Council. And so that's really it for that.
Great. Moving on with a continued discussion of Article two dash seventeen, Section five, Streets and Highways of the Hanson General Bylaw. Tom Fanner.
Um, I had asked highway department, the board had asked me to reach out. Uh I reached out to them and I spoke with Steve, but I guess he is, he was in interim, but now he's back as supervisor. He passed it along to the current interim.
But I'm confused. What what's wrong?
At highway?
Yeah.
What happened?
So Steve, so Mr. Shaves, as you're aware, is left.
Right.
And so Steve, uh is it Grant? Grant?
Yes.
Moved up to interim.
Okay.
For I guess a short period of time and now he's moved back to supervisor and a new gentleman has moved in as interim. And his name escapes me at the moment.
Internal candidate or?
No, someone that's I think been on done the job before.
Well, it's going out the bit, right? As far as I know, you know, like, uh, it's, you know, they're gonna post it.
Oh, the job needs to be posted?
Yeah, it has to be posted. Even if they want someone internally, still have to post it.
Yeah, Mr. Grant stepped down then?
Yeah. So now they have an interim guy, right? Uh, what's his name?
I.
Charles.
I.
Chip. I don't know.
I'm not even trying.
One of them until they ask somebody to terminate?
Um, you know, this, anything you do with this article anyway, you were not gonna do till October.
Right.
Okay. But I wanted to bring it to your attention of the fact that under that article, Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section six N, which was not known as six N at the time because this was adopted in nineteen seventy four by Hanson, that two two the Article two dash seventeen sort of mimics the statute.
Okay.
And the statute says if you create a bylaw, you can do, say, certain things. So that's why I also had sent you from other towns what they do, which says, you know, if it's like two thirds of a vote of the residents of the street wanna make improvements, et cetera, et cetera, what you're gonna do, what you're not gonna do. So if it's something that the board is wants to say pursue and put something together that's reviewed by town council and then sort of move it along to the select board to see if they wish to pursue it.
I thought we've done this already, though. Isn't there?
Well, the the difference was this. Um. I wasn't aware that at the time that you had adopted that mass general law. So what you were trying to do, that section of that general law is what you sort of have to do it under, not just a separate policy.
Oh, so why is this in the uh maybe I missed something here. So why is this an issue for a right to found by law?
It's not.
It's not.
A separate issue.
Not separate. We're talking about the Article two dash seventeen.
Private ways acceptance.
Again, what does that have to do with um right to found by law?
It's not. It's not separate issue.
They're separate.
Separate issue. Well, it's separate agenda. We're not even on the right.
Oh, okay. All right. Sorry.
Tony's talking about the Tony's talking about the private ways acceptance policy that went through.
Oh, okay.
Regime rule went to council.
Okay, I get it.
They chopped it up, sent it back.
Yeah.
Tony's saying that there's another avenue.
So what so what it is is Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section six N, deals with private ways.
Mm hmm.
Okay. So I had sent you a section that that actual law.
Yeah.
And it says that as if you're a town and you accept a bylaw under this section and there's like A through whatever, that you're that's how you're going to explain to folks that are on private roads, what you will and will not do as a town beyond, let's say, what you're doing now, which is grading the roads twice a year.
Mm hmm.
I was not aware that the town back in nineteen seventy four had adopted that in their general bylaw.
Okay.
Knowing now that you have.
Yeah.
If you want to pursue that private ways uh item.
You have to consider that.
This is how you would pursue it.
Okay.
So it would be some type of amendment to Article two dash seventeen of the general bylaw, dealing with the private ways and what you will and will not do. So the language that you had kicked up to town council and so forth. You know, this is where if you want to have a meeting of the minds, take a look at it and start seeing what we can and can't do or what you'd like to do and then propose it to the select board as an amendment in the October town meeting to the bylaw.
Can we kick this down down the road? Can we kick this until after town meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
But in the interim, can we get a clean copy of what came back from council in regards to all that? It came back from council, went to the board, the select board, the select board put it back to council. There was something in there about betterments they didn't like. They changed that. They kicked it back again. I don't think we've ever seen a clean return copy.
I believe the one that I've sent you was the clean.
That's the most recent?
I believe that was the most recent copy that was sent to us by town council.
So why don't we place this uh after town meeting and then have both of those, what was sent off and two dash seventeen? We can do a staring compare and see what what we want to if what and if the board wants to uh propose possibly for October. Then we guys don't have to worry about until then.
So apparently, uh what you're saying is that we had not some level of not having awareness of two seventeen, Section five. And town council did not as well.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
How did you find that out?
Just more research.
Nice. All right. Any other questions? All right, moving on.
I'm trying to understand this, that it's the old bylaw that you want to go back to or you want to make new rules?
Well.
Now, which which roads is when you say private? We're not talking about um condo units that have their own roadways and stuff like that.
Now, so under your.
Talking about.
So under your two seventeen, Streets and Highways, this is the general law. So now, under Section five, you talk about the town may, subject to appropriation, at any town meeting, make temporary repairs on private ways as follows. So this is what the town will do. Grading to not more than two times a year, annually replacement of suitable material, drainage improvements may be implemented as required. Said repairs shall be determined by the highway director. No petition by a butted shall be required for such repairs. No betterment charges shall be assessed. So you have an A through G, okay? Now, if we.
What's wrong with that?
Nothing. If you're if you're happy with that, but so that what's what is there, okay, is modeled after this, which is the statute. So cities and towns may adopt, may by ordinance or by law, provide for making temporary repairs on private ways. Such ordinance or by law shall determine, A, the type of and extent of repairs, B, if drainage shall be included. The repairs are required by public necessity, the number of percentage, the number of percentage of abudders who must petition for such repairs, E, if betterment charges shall be assessed, F, the liability limit of the city or town on a on account of damages caused by the such repairs, G, if ways shall have been open to the public use for a term of years, and H, if cash deposits shall be required for said repairs. So.
Can I ask a question just real quick?
Yeah.
Before I forget. So the term where it says it shall have opened to public use for a term of years, right? So I have two questions on that is, you know, the open, you know, like how long, how can you prove? How do you prove that it's been open to the public? And I use Lakeside Ave as a perfect example.
That's one of the reasons why this came up.
So, right. So, you know.
So here, so you're so G, okay, so if you look at G for that the town has, it says such repairs shall be performed only on ways which have been open to the public use for six years.
But again, I mean, how do you how do you qualify that? Like, I'm just I'm just confused as like, you know, I I can say, you know, tomato and you could say tomato. Like, who do you like, what's the the data to support that?
That's not.
It's just, you know.
That's one of the whole reasons why this came up is that this whole Section five has not been.
Changed.
Has not had any oversight. It has not had any any it has been no oversight nor hasn't been applied too properly by our own internal departments. So our own internal departments have gone, made repairs on private ways. Uh they they failed because there were Band-Aids. So three years later, they failed. And then the citizens of those private ways went and saw went into the citizens petition. And now the town accepted that private way. All of that temporary stuff, we we weren't paid for. It was done as a as a free free benefit. I give you, you know, give me from the town to those folks, as well as the fact that now that entire, as we know, some of those private ways, they're in bad condition. And now they're now viable for for um the town.
Yeah.
As opposed to this new process could put in place something that the way would have to be improved before it got accepted.
So this so this was another community and this is their temporary repairs to private ways. So again, they model it on the statute, which they have to.
Yeah.
But they make, you know, so say for a betterment assessment, you know, they make a difference here. They say there shall be one hundred percent betterment assessment of cost of temporary repairs. However, as an alternative method, the select board may require abudders to to the private way to pay fifty percent of the estimated cost of the temporary repairs instead of a hundred percent. Said fifty percent payment shall be deposited with the town treasurer collector prior to the repairs being made. Any excess of such funds paid by the abudders shall be returned to the abudders upon completion of the repairs. The cost of the temporary repairs shall include labor, material equipment, inspection. And if you see down here, they talk about a six years as far as the public use. No private way shall be repaired hereunder unless and until it has been open to you to the use of the public and plowed and sanded by the town for no less than six years. So they got maybe a little more specific. So all I'm saying is that you had that policy you were looking at and here's how and where, if you want to try and implement that policy or throw it up the flag and see who salutes, that's where you're gonna do it. And you have it in you have it in place already.
We didn't need to reinvent the wheel. We already had it in place. We just needed to have an edit and omit and.
Correct. Correct.
So I have a question for you. What's the what's the definition of a private way for public use? Are there such like, you know, we have our, you know, adequate access and all that stuff, the width of the road has to be a certain stuff. So where's that?
We don't have that in the town of Hanson's language yet. A lot of the towns, as you see here, I have a way for public use. If the town's plowed it for X amount of time, now that's considered public ways, public use. We don't have that. So that's how down on Lakeside, that's how they were able to do what they were able to do because they were able to say, hey, I'm gonna put up a toll. It's gonna be a toll road, you know, threatening that kind of stuff.
Mm hmm.
Uh because we don't have anything that allows the town to say, well, wait a minute. The town's plowed that for emergency services. It's graded it twice a year. You know, we've maintained the road. It's for public use. They tried to say it and they said, no.
So I guess what I'm getting at is like, I was just on a private way in town, right? And the roads were really thin. Like, I'm talking like only one vehicle could get by and that was even sketchy with all of the stuff around it, right? So um how can you, like, at any date in the future, set up a system that would allow a road that small and unusable um to be called, you know, a private way for public access? Because it doesn't have adequate access to it in the first.
And there's a difference between public access and public way.
Right.
Right? There's a difference between us. Public access just means that when you're driving down that road, somebody could come out and say, get off my property. Right now, people could come out and say, what are you doing parking here? Get off my property.
Hmm.
That's they own to the road, right? They could get off my property. But if you put some stuff in place, then now it's been maintained. So now it's public way. They say, get out my property. You say, no, 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 the town maintains this. This is actually public access.
Well, I think this also goes down the road. I mean, when you the the dirt roads like Lakeside, Lake Shore and road close to ever becoming a public way, never gonna happen.
Hmm.
That's the reality. Never gonna happen.
Yeah, and the road.
The cost the cost would be tremendous to the town.
It's the land taking.
But if you have certain roads that are private but were approved under the subdivision control law.
Right.
That have pavement and some drainage, may not meet today's drainage requirements, but when they were done, they had drainage, they have pavement, et cetera. Those are the type of roads that you because we've had folks come in who say, hey, I live on this road, the pavement's falling apart. Or the catch basin's a caving in.
Yeah.
And they, we want you to do something. And the town says, we can't.
It's private.
It's private.
Mm hmm.
This is where in those situations, and that's where working with town council to come up with in essence, a specific language, because you want people to know that, yeah, look, you know, we're not gonna go out and do certain roads because we know they're never gonna become, but you may have some that are private, but again, and were approved under the subdivision control. And at least you can know, well, okay, look, maybe we can go out there using this mechanism to do some paving or fix a catch basin or a sidewalk or.
The only dangerous part of that is that when we proposed that, town council was not all interested in assessing any kind of betterment charge. And I don't know where that came from. Mr. Ellison?
I got a couple of questions and uh um, how were they? I asked you ten minutes ago. Write that stuff down. Well, how many roads in the town are private?
Seventy. Seven. There's seventy. I'm just gonna go with seventy, but I believe there's a few more.
Seven zero?
Seven zero.
Wow. And every year, they're certified by the board of the select board as well.
So this this I'm bringing this up only because you as a board had worked on this before I came on.
Yep.
This this has happened years ago and it's come up. Every so many years, it comes up. There's two things that when it goes to the select one because it's a general bylaw, right? They choose because of voting to service these roads. They've even stated that, but that's been offline, that they said that I'm not gonna go down there and tell him that he's gonna have to pay for that when he's been paying all the taxes and he's gonna vote for me. So there's a couple of issues that go on that have kept it have kept it the way it is.
Yeah, politics.
Right. And.
Yeah, it's right there in the general bylaw. No betterment charges shall be assessed. So it's you can't.
Item H, if we don't.
You can't.
Guy with the road. Now, back to a subdivision like Alden Way that we just went through, that's been paved, that's been gone through. That went through the courts. And when I first got on the board, I found out the reason you can't go back after them or the developer because they were all done and approved to sort to the requirements for that subdivision that was put in by the plan and for the town. And if you're gonna go back and tell them you can't do that, they'll just go to court.
I think what the.
And they'll have to do it because they did it according to the law. And they'll have to do it because they did it according to the policy. And town dropped it because they didn't take it down to the selectman, they gave it to the selectman and they failed to record it.
But that was the, that was the acceptance of the road and getting the bond back.
Right.
This is talking about, but after, that, that road failed even further after the fact. You know, the culvert, the culvert caved in, they have frost heaves, the sidewalk fell in, so.
How many years later?
Couple of years, good couple of years.
It was like fifteen years.
Yeah, so a good couple of years later, and then those folks that were down there said, hey Hanson, our road's broken, you need to fix it.
Right.
So highway went over, especially with the culvert that caved in, highway went over, they parched and temporary patched an area. And they said back to the folks. We did something so that no, you know, no kids are gonna fall in, but you, you, you guys need to really fix this. And everybody down there went, no, 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 this is, this is a town road. No, you live on a brightened street, and that's what started all that, remember Steve teletronic screaming everybody? So that's.
I think that's what the issue. So they pay the same taxes that you're paying, and then what happens if those on your street?
Taxes, yeah, but, yeah, but I don't own the road on my street.
They didn't, they didn't own the road either?
I owned it, yeah, they owned to the center of the road.
That's, they don't own that. That is not, that's a misconception, they do not own to the center of the road. You can't go out there and stop people from driving on that path that's in front of your.
I'm very glad you said that, how did they, how did they do it on Lakeside then? That's exactly what.
Because there's no mechanism to stop them. Well, it was never approved as a street. That was on a road put through there. The developer came in, Charlie Mayor, and developed the other houses down there, extended the road down. But it wasn't, they didn't go to the planning wood. I mean, there was no requirement, he came to the planning wood, he would have had drainage and he would have had asphalt and all the other stuff.
None of the deeds for Zellia Way were ever adjusted when the town Henson's accepted the project.
We can agree to.
Do we agree to disagree?
So Tony, just based on this discussion, right?
I see scrap all this.
No, better clarifying what, uh, uh, you know, a public road, a private road. I, I think the definitions of what we're putting in this document uh, need to be. Uh, there needs to be a cheat sheet so people know.
And the, and the stuff that I signed up to Flagpole, it was like a glossary of terms in the back, but I don't think.
That's what.
I don't know if they continue.
You know, like, what, you know, what you think is a private road and what I think is a private road and what Don Ellis thinks is a private road, it's three different things.
Yeah.
Right, and they could vary, so if you're gonna use these words, you need to clarify their meaning.
Gets even further complicated because what's on, what's in the tax assistance records defines different things than what's in the back room?
Look at the, look at the, down on Harson, all those roads are owned by the town, they're all gravel, the ones that are gravel.
Yeah.
Do they go down there?
The ones that are gravel, that's a very good point. Uh, yeah, they were just down the grade, looks like.
So is that, is that something we can do, Tony, and just work on a, like, meaning and the definition of these words, and I say we, I say it in a royal sense, but, you know.
Well, it all depends if I give you those definitions.
About a whole can of worms, so it's.
Not, not. That's supposed to be, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, you guys had a policy that you were trying to move, they're trying to move forward. I'm just, I'm just telling you that, hey, if you're still looking to do that policy, well, here's where you're gonna do it.
Yeah.
If you don't, then.
Why'd you even bring this up?
He's still, he's still out there. So, so we'll, we'll get that information and, and put this on after May. Sound good?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I just, I'm just gonna read something for you. I'm, I'm just gonna read something for you regarding the whole fee issue, okay, which is to the center of the road. Okay? This is out of the land court. Says bounded on a way, at common law, the word by. Has been interpreted as including the fee in the way abutting a parcel. And the words by the line of and other similar phrases have been interpreted as excluding the fee. In a way abutting a parcel. The common law principle was codified by general law, chapter one eighty-three. Section fifty-eight, the so-called derelict fee statute. Which creates a rebuttal presumption as to the fee in a way, water course or monument abutting a parcel. The statute applies to all instruments executed on or after January first nineteen seventy-two. And to instruments executed prior to that date on the recorded land side. The statute does not apply to registered land instruments executed prior to January first nineteen seventy-two. Where the land has been registered or confirmed before that date. So the derelict fee statute, that's out of the land court's book, that's their manual. That's how, as a surveyor, that's. So that fee statute, there's an attorney that goes out looking for just this. To create, to create work for himself. So that's what the derelict fee statute says, unless it's explicit in their deed. That says, I as a developer own, I am, I am taking the fee, I am taking the center of the road. They own to it.
Except for things like Lakeside or Mount Harson, because it's prior to seventy-two.
But if it's registered.
Oh, if it's registered.
Has to be registered.
Has to be registered.
Yeah.
So, so that's what you're saying, that lawyer goes out, knocks on doors.
Yeah, so anything that is registered land, okay, prior to nineteen seventy-two, does not apply. All instruments after that date, it applies to.
So can I just ask you a quick question? Trying to understand this, so.
And before that date.
We improved a lot on Lakeside, right? And uh, we made them do stormwater management and um. Did they own half, halfway out to the middle of the road?
Yes.
Even that, and that's because it was done after nineteen seventy-two?
Right. It's a private way, so they owned to the fee.
But, you know, and just, in my thought, just because they own it, doesn't mean they can do what they want with it.
No.
Right, there's an easement there.
Correct.
For passage for everybody that lives on that street.
Usually.
Believe it's in their deed.
Usually, yes.
I mean, you would expect that it would be.
Yeah, usually there is, the deed, the deed will say something along the lines of. An easement uh, for use of whatever roads are used for within the town, there is different language.
Because they wouldn't be able to close on their mortgage if they didn't have some assertion that, you know, uh.
Because there are, there are deeds that you can read and it'll say excluding the fee. And then many others, you won't see it.
Right.
So the ones that say excluding the fee means the developer says, I'm hanging on to the fee and there's a reason for it. Because when the, he wants, he or she wants to go to have it accepted as a public way. They're not gonna have to worry about that person going, hang on a second, I don't want it to be a public way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know?
Yep.
So. So I just want to, because I, you know, it gets kicked around a lot with the fee, the fee, the fee, well, that's what the land court talks about with the fee. And where, and when it applies.
But you can't stop anybody from using.
No, well, let's postpone, there's plenty of court cases on that.
Doesn't it get, doesn't it get even?
Happens all the time.
Doesn't it get even?
They own it, it's mine, you can't drive.
Access to get in and out of that road.
Yeah.
Does it get either further confusing when the utility company?
Another thing that made it, that took a kick back was a guy wanted to put his septic system out there on one of these dirt roads many, many years ago. And he went to JEP, that went all the way to them, saying, well, I own that, I can do what I want with it. You know, and they came back, no, no, you don't own it.
Title five mound.
Yeah.
Doesn't it get even more complicated when the utilities put? Gas or water down?
Whole different animal.
Yes.
Whole different animal. Yeah.
It's okay, who wants?
The util, the utilities companies have a wide berth as when it comes to utilities and putting it where they want it.
So I was hoping the water company was gonna go down to Lakeside and knock that fence out and say, hey, we gotta get to a water. Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna take this up again sometime in the summer.
So we're gonna, we're gonna look at the definitions, well?
Yeah, 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 we can get that, right, Tony, well, he's gonna get their clean copy and sum it up, he's got that glossary term. Uh, moving on, so uh, right to farm warrant article, the select board has requested the planning board to review the proposed article provide comments. This is the last item, item three in our packet.
Um. Yeah, the. Select board sent a, an email asking if the board would have had any comments regarding the. The right to farm. I sent information back to the select board and said, you know, here is. So the, the state has a. Uh, we'll say a, a model right to farm template. And that's what the towns adopt. They make, they, they change it and they, that's what they adopt. And so I, I passed that along to the select board uh, and said, well, here's this, what towns accept. Here's some other towns, what they've done. You know, it's up, it's up to the select board whether they wanna do it or not and maybe talk to town council, maybe they've had experience with other towns or what they've done. You know, I mean, there's. You know, there's a. I'm, I, I don't have a problem with right to farm.
And you had some changes you recommended for that, closing the wrong town.
Well, yeah, well, here, here's the thing, here's the thing with right to farm that. The, the, I'll say the experiences that I've had or things that I've noticed. It tends to not be the folks that follow the law that are the problem.
Yeah.
But the folks that do not. I've seen cases where you've had a house, you've had houses that are about thirty feet apart and someone had a horse corral in between. Or cows, uh, not far from where I live, there was someone who, we're not even a right to farm community. And they had four goats in a room, in a shed with uh. Outdoor space about the size of this table.
Yeah.
And it got to the point where the neighbors had to complain and get it shut down because of the smell and they had chickens.
They crowed the animals too.
Right, and there's always the, the rooster factor, you know, roosters do not just go off at five thirty in the morning, they usually go off all day. You know, if it's, you know, if you're on a five acre parcel, great, but if it's someone's within. Five feet of your house and that rooster's crowing, it's gonna cause problems, but. It's up to the people, but I just, I presented it's like, just, hey, here's the information, you guys make the decision.
Yeah, we tried to do that a few years ago. And then they got chopped down because, like, I don't know where you were at that time when they bought this building.
Was the guy with the cow up there?
Yeah.
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 Yep.
Uh, well, go up there and look now, he's got all his chickens up against the wall there too. Yeah, a lot of people.
You know, I think a lot of people had, had an issue with it and, and my thought was, uh, they didn't really understand that um. When you say that it's a right to farm community, the farmer has the right to farm in the community so long as he follows the rules. That they're laid out in the Bible, right, and there's things, and then they say like, you're talking about distances from things and, you know, so. It's actually uh, better for a town to have a, um, this law. Because it allows for us to say, no, you can't do that in that space because it's not good for the community.
Well, the one thing I saw with other communities and committed a lot of research for me was, they just adopted and it. They just adopted the language.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's a disclosure that has to go out to like every property owner. So when you sell the property, you have to disclose that it's a right to farm community.
Mm-hmm.
So that someone doesn't come in and go. Oh, this is a great place and all of a sudden the next door neighbor puts a, a horse next to them and they go, wow, this is, you know, and. So there's just one of those things is. Know what you're buying is all I'm saying, just be aware of everything and maybe have council just look at it and be sure that when you say. Yeah, let, if we wanna be, if you wanna be a right to farm community, that we do everything right. Because again, it's not the ones that follow the law that are gonna be the problem, it's the ones that don't, and then, you know. There's gonna become enforcement issues and, you know.
I, I like this because it does set the standards, what you. What you can and can't do. Yeah, the baseline, that way someone doesn't try to put five cattle on a half acre land. It's two sides of the same coin, you're protecting the town, but you're also saying, you know, we support farming, but as long as it's within, within this.
Yeah, well, I've also seen that anytime that I've ever entered, that is a right to farm, that's a sign that every major.
There is.
It says we're a right to farm community.
Well.
I think they self-regulate.
They wrote that up, there is, there is no regulation in here that, that was sent, there was no minimum size.
Right, right.
Lot, there is uh. Lot, there's no acreage or more area for cows and horses and goats and llamas and things like that. That they need more area, uh, minimum lot size setbacks, you know, for this guy up here, you go up there now and he's still doing that. Up there.
He's got a cow up there?
He's got chickens, dog. He's got a whole bunch of chickens right against the damn fence, same as it was before, you just changed it to chickens instead of having a. Calf manure. I mean, this is ridiculous, these people shouldn't have to, and it shouldn't have to be, they get into town and, oh, you should have read this fine print. It should be the same way, I mean, this is only common sense.
Yeah.
When, when you do your neighbor, if you don't like your neighbor, then they start putting all the stuff.
Get a rooster.
Border health has issues in this, the state has already, the laws insinuating what you could do. You know, you can't have five cows in your backyard if you're only on a thirty thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is that the references to the state?
Yeah, and this is what happened before, we got up a town meeting and I said all this and, and they got mad at me. What's his name, uh, his wife was a charity, she says, well, we sent it over, we never got it.
It was an attorney.
But, what's his name, oh geez, I can't think of it, but, you know, it just, it doesn't make common sense.
I think that it also came up, if I'm not mistaken, I was saying this to Tony, I think it also came up, that the boggers. Remember they were having uh, this complaint about the silica dust that was coming through? And what, the storage of the silica dust, and the, and the boggers were saying, oh, no, no, we got saltless sand permits and. Said, yeah, you can salt and sand permits, but cover them up, because all the folks involved.
Yeah, yeah, down on Roseway.
It was getting all blown in and blown in and blown in and the.
That's the sand they used to put on the.
And the boggers weren't taking care of it.
It's like based on the research that I.
They need, they need, they need uh, something in there about armed shelters, fence pens and. And manure storage, you know?
You wanna make that recommendation?
There's nothing in there, it's just, you're, you're, you're farming community.
Yeah, but if you, if you look at the state regulations, it says in there, uh, using, using, uh. I forget how, how they term it, but they call it animal husbandry, right, and uh, there's rules about that, right? So at the state level from the state, right, uh, there's things, if you look at, you know, uh, what's, what's um, appropriate for a cow, right? You look in there and it does codify it, it says, you know, you can't have here, you can't have there, you can't do this. It, it's like all over the map because, let's face it, have you ever seen two farms that look the like?
No.
You know, I mean, how, how do you, if you start doing fence setbacks and stuff like that.
All swamp land everywhere.
You know, well, they, my understanding. From the research, my understanding of the research is the, this came in, the, the rate to farm sort of came into effect was. To prevent farmers from being sued by, we'll call frivolous lawsuits of noise and dust and smell and so that. Because people would move in next to a farm and then, oh my God, it smells like cow manure and it's like, well, no kidding, you moved in next to a farm. And then they're getting sued by the neighbors and they run out of business.
The guy, the same thing.
That isn't this.
Same thing as the guy at Pepperell, I'm gonna sue that the Cranland Airport was an airport. When you buy your house, didn't you see the big strip behind your house? So.
So, I mean, you know, I don't know what. So they just were asking for any comments, you know, I, I just presented, I just, I just gave them the information and said, you know, here's the state requirement.
We, we have two other things that are there, excuse me.
No, get it in, we don't want it that way all the time. Get it in, I, no, I feel you pitched my bomb.
We need the regulations, there's no way around it, it's gotta have something in there that they can read.
So are you saying that the article as written needs to be, is too broad?
It's not broad enough, I mean, you're not, you're not saying anything, yeah, it's too broad.
Detail enough, it's too broad.
Right.
But there's, but there is references in there.
When we went before the town meeting, they shut it down because you got up and said, there's, there's no regulation, you can put it wherever you want. You could have five cows in a, in a thirty thousand square.
No, see, that, that was inaccurate is what we're saying, because the state, state says.
It doesn't say.
You have to have X amount of square feet, they put that in there.
Doesn't say that.
Easy enough.
So can we get that as a recommendation, Tony, up to the select board? That they need to have reference in there to the regulatory requirements of the state?
They have to keep people in line, you know that there are always gonna be some jerk.
Well, it, it's, it's one of those, it's one of those things where.
Bring back public logging.
Yeah, well, it's one of those, this is gonna be a. This is gonna be a general pilot and this is a case of what recommendations do you have? Now, you, do you have a list of recommendations or do you make a recommendation that says? Maybe you move it to October while it's investigated to come up with something that's.
Regulatory.
Yeah.
Yeah, same references, yeah.
That just makes sense.
That sounds very good.
Or.
The form of a motion. Make the motion, Mr. Ellison has made a motion that the planning board. Uh, recommend to the select board to reference state regulation and have that clarification for the October town meeting. Respect, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion regards to that motion? Seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed.
So are you saying that the select board should consider tabling this until they do more research?
Yes. Regulatory, regulatory research.
That's an interesting way of putting that.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I have a feeling.
The other question I have.
I'm not, you know, I know, Miss Rain, you know, Mrs. Rain is big into the right to farm. So I'm hoping that she doesn't, you know, come after me because I'm not saying, don't not, I'm just giving you information, you guys make the.
She might not be there.
You, you make, you make the, you know, you make the decisions of what you want to do, you know, just read it, that's all.
The other side of this, the other question about was, as far as the enforcement, does Hanson have an animal control officer right now, full time?
No.
So that's another major issue. I'm pretty sure the billing inspector is not going to go down and inspect the barn. But I know that there's five cows and two chickens in it, you know?
That's one of those things where, you know, uh, all of the, um, you know, entities have to have some say in it because building inspector for the building, like, there's too many areas that, you know, like, it, it's almost like, you know, they all have to come together, go to the site and say, you can't do this because of this, can't do this because of that, you know? Because you get right down to it, uh, the board of health is involved, right? The, you know, um, even the conservation commission, I mean, you can have a cow and a wet one, but, you know, I don't know, is there a rule that says you can, how many cows?
But he can't, he can't, he can't.
Exactly.
You had a cow on the wet list tonight. We got a lot of puns going around tonight.
Alright, there you go.
Uh, so, so we're going to recommend that and, and if they take our advice, they take our advice, you know? Um, moving on to board business, town planner update, draft planning department policy and procedural manual.
I didn't know if the board had had any time to review and made any comments or had any edits, if you do.
I actually think Kevin did.
So you can email them to me, that's fine.
Yeah, or can we just continue us to a discussion on that for a second?
Sure.
Yeah, I think Kevin did, actually.
I thought it looked pretty good. Say again? I thought it looked pretty good.
Yeah, it does look good.
Steven, what is comment, so?
Um, one thing I, I'll apologize, Mr. Chair, is I didn't put, um, subcommittee, uh, subcommittees, uh, on here this evening.
Does anybody have anything, uh, uh, you know, unforeseen for good of the order with subcommittees? I've got dates and no dates, I mean, significant?
Hey, you didn't ask me.
I said, was pulled this way, this way, this way, left and right, left and right.
No, we did good, we got, uh, we got, uh, the, uh, the committee voted to bring forward the plans for the planning board for review.
Oh, nice, for the park?
For the park, yeah.
Wonderful.
I don't know if you've got them yet.
The, I know they're going to send me a letter saying.
Yeah, well, you're still waiting for that, then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But.
Every time, you know, get it done, you know, like, wait, wait, wait.
But we did get a, uh.
We did vote, so it's on record.
There is a proposal so that you could pursue the earmark money as well.
Can I ask some questions about that?
Mr. Kevin?
I know, a few years back, we had, uh, a breakout session for, uh, what was going to happen at the park, right? So as we sit today, the plan that's being presented is that all of those issues that were brought up then and the questions and all, that was all been flushed out, right?
As far as I know.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is like, um, the park committee came up with a plan based on what the community's expectations were at the time.
Right.
Right, so when it comes to planning, only the lots are already exist, right? So what's, why do we even have to look at it, I guess that's my question.
Well, I think as a planning board, it allows the planning board to have a public hearing, get comment, notify about us.
Okay.
I think there may be also be something, you know, I'll, I'll need to do a little research to see if, you know, that might be the type of thing where you have zoning. Uh, it's a site plan, technically they have the site plan control, so I have to do, I have to do a little research on the presentation to the board.
I thought the use, use for that area is zoe proper, right? Isn't it, isn't it zoe for park?
I, I know there's, there's, there's what, there's four lots, maybe three? One of which was, it voted at town meeting to go into conservation.
Yeah, right.
And the other two were voted as, as is, you know, and, and I don't remember if they were combined, but even if they're not, right, um, there's no change really, so I guess, you know, I'm just wondering like, I don't mind being involved with a hearing and all that other stuff, I'm just wondering like, uh, is that just another unnecessary step?
I have to, like, again, I have to do a little research on it, uh, to see the steps with the, with the park because I think maybe as you move forward with, um, grants, you know, having something that was before the planning board and either approval or procedural or support.
Well, I guess my, my real.
I think the reason for it is, I may interrupt, Kevin.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, is the, the construction of the road. It's not so much where the road's going, it's the construction of the road that meets the capacity for traffic, pedestrians.
Oh, coming up from high street?
Right.
So truthfully, I'm going down this line because I'm thinking to myself, right? All kinds of people have had, all kinds of input on how that park should look at the end of the day, right? So it, but if, so if we had hearings about the park and how it's laid out and all that other stuff, people who weren't involved in those prior discussions are going to want to bring all the same stuff back up again. It's already been flushed out.
You got a point there.
Yeah, so that's my concern is when we open it up, right? Now we're going to have all these people who want to re-engineer everything and it's like, you know, this plan's already been thoroughly flushed out. And, you know, why bring it up again?
So the public hearing is just a public hearing to inform this is what's being presented.
Well, what if, what if we were a, a, a public hearing to discuss the construction of the roadways within?
Yeah.
So we could be more specific because all that other stuff, I got to be honest with you. From our perspective, it's just minutia and it shouldn't be part of any hearing that we have, I guess is what I'm saying. That's the, if you got an issue with what's, how the park's laid out, go to the park committee when they have their meeting, they, they meet what, once a month? You know what I mean, so I just don't really think we should get into.
We really want to attract people, we should also put on there for the public hearing that we're taking nominations for naming of the park.
No, don't need to go there.
I want to call it the Ellis Young Park.
The, uh, one, one other thing I have is, um, there's a. There's a Hanson.
It's all the medicine I'm on.
There's a Hanson Housing Authority meeting on the eleventh. And it's being advertised as a combination meeting Hanson Housing Authority, CPC and Planning Board.
How can that be? I'm the chairman of CPC, I have nothing.
So.
Yeah.
So, uh, the town clerk had reached out to me about this and I'm like, this is news to me, so I, I don't, I don't know, so.
On Thursday?
Yeah, so.
Is there a Zoom option available?
I will look, so I want, two things, I wanted to bring it to the board's attention.
It's got to be posted.
And two, I have time to post it tomorrow morning.
Yeah, posted.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be a Kevin thing that we don't know about.
Yeah, so.
Hanson Housing Authority is asking to have a, asking to have a joint meeting with CPC, planning and whole planning board?
So it's one of those things where I will verify the agenda, their agenda, and if it's still that case, I will post that the board or the members may attend and give evidence.
I can attend, but I can only attend via Zoom.
Yeah, so I will, I will, I will get a little more information, but I wanted to bring it to you because I still have time to post.
Okay.
And can I just, I just want to say this for the record, you know, when you have a meeting and, and you're posting it jointly for three different boards, uh, more notice is required, I would think, because all these people have lives. You know, I have plans for Thursday, I can't go because I had no idea that there was any such meeting. And I'm actually on one of the committees where you're saying that has to be posted and there's nobody's going to post that because no one on CPC is even aware of it. So that's kind of exclusionary, actually, you know?
I wasn't, you know, I could only focus on planning, which is what was brought to my attention, I, I thought, I was like, I, I was surprised, I was, I looked at the town clerk and I'm like, uh, this is news to me, I don't, I.
Right, well, as a, I was saying, as a planning board number as well.
Used on all of us.
Yeah.
I mean, why are we finding out on Monday that we have a meeting on Thursday that's posted for all of us?
Who requests the meeting? Chair of Hanson Housing or that guy from?
They, they went to the town clerk to post their meeting. And the assistant town clerk reached out to me and said, hey, are you aware of this because you would, you need to post, you would, and are you going to post? And I was like, no idea.
Yeah.
So I figured, okay, on Monday, when I'm here, I wasn't, I didn't know whether the CPC even knew about it.
Who's the chair?
Clearly.
I'm the chairman, I would know.
The chair of housing, right, housing is, uh, Mike Jones, right?
No, no, it's, uh, I can't think of his name, uh, moment. I have his card in my wallet if I look for it, but, um, yeah, I, I just don't understand how, how we can be posting for a meeting, it, it's like, uh, we're posting for a meeting in case you people show up.
Yeah, that's what Tony's doing, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, are you kidding?
And then during that meeting, if you're on a CPC, you'd have to make a declaration that you're, I'm on from CPC. I'm on from CPC.
I mean, we would, I never received any kind of uh, email or anything from H H A stating, hey, are you, would you guys be interested in coming to a, a meeting? You know, now, I have to preface that with, we have had issues with them email, but I've not seen it, no one's contacted me or via phone or anything like that to say, hey, we're having a meeting, we'd like you guys to be there. So.
Have they posted the agenda yet?
They, uh, they have posted the agenda, but I don't know if they post on the website.
Okay.
I know a lot of them don't post on the website.
How, how is, how is the community supposed to be in, no, I mean, that should be, the agenda should have been posted.
Well, they have till, they, tomorrow, they have till tomorrow to post, forty-eight hours.
You have to work your telepathic ability.
Yeah, yeah, we're working on that.
The last thing.
Right to farm.
I think, I think it's an insult to people's time, you know, like, I would love to go to this meeting, and but now I can't and I feel, um, that's not right.
I'll put it on Zoom, I'll record it, I can send it to you.
The, um.
Yeah, but I can't comment on something they might say, right?
The, the last item is, um, the Commonwealth put out a F A Q.
Yeah, that was great.
On M B T A. And so what I did is I sent, I sent it to all the members and what I've done is I've put that information on the town's webpage and on the planning board's webpage.
Yeah.
And, you know, so I tried to, tried to put it out there. Unfortunately, we don't have a social media.
Everyone's made up their mind, I'm just kidding.
They might have.
Oh.
They might have, so.
We, we have no clue what it's about, though.
What's that? With that, M B T A's already?
Oh, no, you moved on to that.
So that's the, that's the last thing, uh, uh, I have is I, I've put that out there for some addition, it has some F A Q information.
What I love is that that F A Q shuts down all speculation about, you know, oh, does the state really have the jurisdiction to do this?
Yes.